Feel like a Tuesday does it.
I call to order the Rosemont Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 27th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The first item on our agenda this evening is our annual election of Chair and Vice Chair. So we will start with election of Chairperson. Are there any nominations from the floor for the position of Chairperson?
I'd like to nominate Melissa Kenninger.
Second.
It has... Okay, I gotta follow this? We do this annually? Yeah, let me... Would someone like to make a motion to close the nominations?
Move to close the nominations.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Bednar to close the nominations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Would anyone like to make... You've got the... Someone's got this on their thing. I can't... I can't do it myself.
Oh, okay. Let's see. For the Chairperson.
Yep.
I would like to nominate Melissa Kenninger as Chairperson for Planning Commission for, by unanimous consent, to the position of Chairperson.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Bugai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will continue to serve as your Chairperson. Thank you for that honor. Now we'll move on to Vice Chair. Are there nominations from the floor for Vice Chair?
Nominate Commissioner Reed.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay. I will make a motion to close the nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Bugai or Commissioner Kenninger and seconded by Commissioner Bugai to close the nominations. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will let you...
And I'm honored to serve as Vice Chair.
Oh, we gotta elect you first, though.
Okay, alright.
This one right here.
We're the only nominees, so... The odds are good.
Make a motion to elect Reed by unanimous consent.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to elect Commissioner Reed by unanimous consent to the position of Vice Chair?
We will consider you just making that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it. It has been moved by Commissioner Bednar, seconded by Commissioner Kenninger to nominate Commissioner Reed as Vice Chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm honored to serve. We usually have our act together much better than this. It's all on me for throwing things off.
We got through it. Okay. Are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair, there are no additions.
Thank you. Now that we stumbled through the elections, we're gonna breeze through. Is there any input from the audience on items on tonight that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing that, we'll move forward to our consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the April 22nd regular meeting. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? I was not here for the meeting, however, I have read the minutes and I have watched video, so I will be voting tonight on the consent agenda. Someone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. We have no old business tonight, so we will move forward with our public hearing section this evening. We have two public hearing items this evening. The first is a request by Flint Hills Resources for an IUP interim use permit to construct a warehouse tent, and I will turn this over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a pretty straightforward request by Flint Hills Resources to construct a warehouse tent, which would be considered a type of temporary structure at their Pine Bend refinery. It's very similar to an existing interim use permit that was approved by the city in 2019 for some other temporary buildings, such as blast resistant modules and tents, as well as some warehouse tents similar to the building being proposed by the applicant this evening. As I said, there was a 2019 IUP that was approved and in place. Staff is recommending that the term for this interim use permit be the same as that one, or the expiration date be the same as the currently existing IUP, just so that it makes the renewal a much easier and more straightforward process as well. Also note that the proposed structure is within the blanket agreement area, which is an area that was approved and agreed upon between the city and Flint Hills Resources that would allow them to make changes to the location of those temporary buildings, those blast resistant modules and tents and other structures. So they do have a bit of flexibility within that area, and they have come to the city and other times just to inform us that they were going to be moving some of those things around within that blanket agreement area, which I will show the Commission here shortly. So the site of the proposed warehouse tent is in the very southern portion of the site. You can see Highway 52 on the eastern portion of this aerial photo. West of here, you can see Blaine Avenue, which turns into Rich Valley Boulevard, and the Flint Hills Resources solar array along either side of that road as well. Also note on this aerial, you'll see two of those temporary warehouse structures in the northwest portion of this site here. Elsewhere throughout the site, as I mentioned, there are some other temporary structures throughout the refinery area. Those are highlighted in red there, the two warehouse structures that I noted, as well as the blast resistant modules and tents in this portion of this site, as well as some that are closer to Highway 52. And without going into too much detail, those blast resistant modules are areas where the staff out at the refinery can do work, take their breaks in a safe environment when they're at work and doing their jobs. So this is that blanket agreement area. This is oriented so north is to the right, but the... In September 2014, it did increase the overall area size here, so the... What would be on the left side of this image in the southern portion of the site was added to the blanket area agreement in 2014. So the proposed building, as I said, is more of a... It's a warehouse tent. It's kind of a semi-rigid structure with roof trusses. Here's a elevation looking from one of the ends of the tent, very similar to the other ones that are out there, as I said earlier. So in order to prove an IUP, six findings must be made, or five findings, pardon me. Those are listed out here before you, basically going over whether they are in conformance with the purpose and intent and goals of the comp plan and the zoning ordinance, whatever impacts there might be on traffic congestion. There are no changes proposed with this. There isn't going to be any detriment to the existing character or development in the immediate area, fits right in with the existing site, as well as the existing buildings that have already been approved. The last two, the interim uses, as you know, are interim use permits are used to allow for a set timeframe to accommodate future development in the area. As this is located entirely within the refinery, there's no concerns that this would impede normal and orderly development. And then lastly, that it conforms to all applicable regulations of the zoning district, which it does with regards to setbacks, but there are no existing or future planned parking facilities that this would have to adhere to either. So that being said, staff is recommending approval, subject to the six conditions before you. Those were taken from the existing interim use permit and carried over here. Just note on a couple of these, the expiration date of 2029, it's a shorter term than we would normally have for an IUP, but as I said, staff felt it more straightforward to just have it aligned with the other interim use permit that's in place, so that when it comes time to renew, we just renew one for everything that's been approved so far. And then there were a couple other items here that it is limited to the blanket agreement area. That means if they do move it, they wouldn't need to come back for approval, but it would have to stay in that area and further than 300 feet from Rich Valley. And then that the applicant would pay property taxes on the structures based on their value, rather than seeking a waiver or appealing the valuation with the county and cussers office. So staff is happy to take any questions the Commission may have. The applicant is present also. We can speak to this or any other operational type questions.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions for staff? Okay. This item has a public hearing item, so at this time, we will open up the public hearing. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Any other questions before we move forward with this item?
I'll just say, we did a very in-depth review, I think, of the first interim use permit or the number of strict structures put in place, and had a lot of questions, and I still recall that, and so I feel comfortable with this as a good addition.
I would agree. Okay. With that, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the interim use permit for a warehouse tent, subject to the following conditions numbered one through six.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Bugai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This item will move forward to City Council on June 17th. Our next item on our public hearing agenda this evening is a request by Sunny's Car Wash for approval of a site plan review to construct a car wash facility, and I will turn that over to Julia.
Alright. Alright, so a little bit of a summary of the project in front of the Commission tonight. So the Planning Commission is being asked to consider a request by the applicant and property owner for a site plan review to construct a car wash facility at 2550-149 Street West. So the subject parcel is a part of the Rosewood Center Second Edition Platte area in a Zone MX2, which is Highway Mixed Use District. Car washes are listed as a use that is permitted with standards in the city zoning code. There are five specific performance standards for car washes that are outlined in the city code and as well as in the staff report, which was part of the agenda packet. Staff has determined that the proposed car wash meets the five specific standards. So a little bit overview of the site location. You can see it's outlined on this map, so the property again is located at 2550-149 Street West, which is located in the northwest quadrant of the Biscayne Avenue and County Road 42 intersection. Like I had mentioned, the property is a part of the Rosewood Common Second... Sorry, Rosewood Center Second Edition Platte area. In the spring of 2024, the developer of Rosewood Center came forward for preliminary and final platte approval for this second addition to create five buildable lots in one outlot. There has been one other development project in this addition that has been approved, which is today's Life Childcare Center, which is shown at that 2634 property, but this will be that second one within that Rosewood Center Second Edition Platte area. So a little bit of overview of the site plan. So the site area is 1.43 acres in size. Again, it is Zoned MX2, and the comp plan land use designation for the site is CC Community Commercial. So that proposed site plan shows a car wash facility, which includes a 4,600 square foot building and also vacuum stations. The proposed building will consist of a wash bay for cars to go through, and as well as an equipment room, control room, and a restroom as well. The proposed building is shown to be located in the southeastern side of the site, so kind of... You can kind of see the site plans showing a different outline of what it is north to south. So the building is proposed to be on the southeastern side of the site with the parking and vacuum stations located to the west side of the building. The site plan also shows two vacuum motor equipment enclosures on the property, which you can see is located southwest of the building outlined there, and as well as northwest of the building up in this location right here. The main entrance into the car wash comes from the northern side of the building, which you can see the three stacking areas north of the site, and then they do exit going south and then to the west. The building, parking, and equipment enclosures meet all the required setbacks, and the site plan also meets the impervious surface requirements for MX2, which that maximum requirement is 75%, and the site plan does show the impervious cover should be 53%. So a little overview of the parking and access on the site. So access into the site will come from a private drive that extends west over the adjacent parcel to an existing curb cut on 149 Street West. That private drive is shown to extend east and then south where the three parking stacking lanes are shown that enter into the building. South of the building, you can see that the private drive then extends west, and then north to exit the car wash building, and then it opens up to that parking and vacuum station area, and the parking area extends north to me back up with that main private road, which that site is accessed by. There are a total of 22 parking stalls shown in the parking lot area, with 16 of those stalls having access to vacuums. The applicant also did provide an exhibit showing the turning movements of emergency vehicles, which was reviewed by the city's fire marshal. Little overview of the landscaping. So the applicant did provide a landscaping plan, which shows a mix of deciduous and coniferous trees planted throughout the site, which are shown near right of ways and also along the perimeter of the parcel. Additional trees are provided in the parking island areas and then open space along the western side, which includes screening and stacking lanes on the northern and western or eastern side of the site. The landscape plan does show a total of 61 trees to be planted throughout the site, which meets the requirement of 21 trees, which that was the required number for the site. The additional tree count do account for the need for additional parking landscaping, perimeter landscaping, and then also screening requirements. The landscape plan does show 243 foundation plantings to be provided on site, which exceeds the minimum requirement of 37 foundation plantings. You can see that the foundation plantings are shown to be located on the eastern side of the building, and as well as along as the southern boundary that is adjacent to County Road 42, and as well as along the western boundary, and then some mixed in along the northern boundary as well. So the developer of the Rosewood Center Second Edition Platte had requested that park dedication be collected at the time a building permit was issued, so cash dedication for this parcel is $12,870, which that is also a condition of approval with this site plan review. The applicant did submit a photometric plan, so lights on throughout the site are a combination of pole mounted lights, and then also LED tube lights, which are attached to the vacuum stations. Those will be provided throughout the site. The LED lights will be set up about 10 feet high on the vacuum stations, and then the pole mounted lights will be 20 feet in height. The applicant's submitted of the photometric study does meet the lighting requirements for commercial properties. Little overview of the utility plan. So sewer and water services will be provided by the existing facilities located in 149 Street West, and stormwater will exit the site to the storm sewer within 149 Street West. The city's engineer did review the plans and submitted a memorandum, which was a part of the agenda packet. The memo contains general comments related to grading and also stormwater management. Conformance with all requirements of the study engineer is a requirement with this approval as well. Here's a couple architectural elevations that were submitted. So the building elevations show a mixture of materials, which include stone and as well as white and blue fiber cement panels. The MX2 zoning district has a requirement of at least 50% of the exterior must contain stone or brick, which the site plan does show to meet that. The building height is also shown to be 25 feet in height, which is below that maximum allowed building height of 35 feet. Then here's a overview of the floor plan. Like I had mentioned earlier, there is a wash bay for where cars go through, and then also an equipment room directly adjacent to that, as well as a control room and a restroom as well. And then here are a couple elevations that were submitted, kind of showing a panoramic view of the building. You can see the entrance will be in the... Is in the lower left-hand corner. You can see the entrance there, and then the exit on the lower right-hand side. So in front of the Commission today, there is a motion to approve a site plan reviewing... Site plan review allowing the construction of a car wash facility at 2550-149 Street West, subject to conditions one through five. Do also would like to mention that the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on May 6th, which three residents did attend. There were comments that came up regarding noise, concerns of traffic and walking impacts, car lights, and water usage. I do know the applicant is present and is able to speak on some of those more complicated questions. Staff can also answer any questions the Commission may have, but yeah.
Thank you. Does the Commission have any questions for staff? Want to start, Commissioner Reed?
Yes, and we can ask the applicant about the noise, but what are the city standards for noise that would apply here, and are there any concerns about the level of noise from the car wash?
To my knowledge, there aren't any concerns that came up during our interdepartmental meetings in regards to noise. We do have standards outlined in our police regulations, section of our city code in regard to noise levels, though.
Okay. And then, can you pull up the landscape plan? I want to make sure. There was one of the conditions, not conditions, but one of the requirements is around opacity. And can you just say a little bit more about... Kind of describe how you did in the report about the opacity and tree versus... I'm sorry, the building versus trees, and how that requirement will be met?
So it does look like the... What they had submitted is about 41 trees as a... For screening of that stacking lane area, which is 90% screening, which looks to meet our code in regards to stacking area required for 90% screening at 6 feet height. So it does look like their landscape plan does meet that.
So the trees, and they're on the left side here, but this would be on the east and north?
Yeah, so looking on the left-hand side, that is 149 Street West, and then this side on the upper part of the page is the eastern side of the parcel. County Road 42 would be on the right-hand side, and then the adjacent commercial property would be on the... This bottom side. So the parcel's kind of switched a little bit on this landscape plan.
So is the expectation that the landscaping, the trees on this diagram on the top, wrapping around to the left there, would recreate the 90% opacity for the neighbors?
Correct.
Okay. And it... Okay, very good. And then, other question is about the untreated water. I didn't quite follow the way that was written up, because the requirement is untreated water from the car wash shall not be discharged. And then the finding was if pre-treatment system is utilized, if pre-treatment system is utilized, plants or said system will be reviewed. So is the water being discharged untreated, or is there going to be a treatment of that?
That will be worked out with our engineering department as well, but I do know that for water tanks, there are some triggers that make the MPCA involved, but technically, if it's clean water, it only has to have one inspection for water tank inspections, but the applicant will have to work with the city's engineering staff and as well of... As well as any other entities that trigger need for additional either inspections or permits and stuff like that. I know that the applicant can probably speak on that as well a little more and see how they've had... How they've been able to interact with other entities at their other sites, but yeah.
Commissioner Reed, Madam Chair, if I may, since this is at a site plan review level, we aren't reviewing the building permit plan, so we don't know the actual mechanical and system type designs for that. So really, the condition is if it is of a type that... If it is of that type of system, then it's kind of a but for, if then situation. So that's something that would be reviewed through our building permit process.
Got it. Thank you.
I have two questions. On that top left, like that road that kind of jets out, like what is that for?
I guess... Which road?
So like if you follow the... Yeah, if you go in and then go, and then instead of turning the corner, it kind of cuts to the left and it...
Right here.
Nope.
Oh, it's like a little spur.
Is it part of the private drive?
That goes straight? This one?
Yeah. I don't know.
So you've got the stacking lanes kind of curved to the right, but if I go to the left, that's right there, yeah? I believe it might be for some...
Snow storage.
Snow storage.
Okay.
I believe, like this area to the south, I believe is also for some snow storage if need be as well.
I just wasn't sure if that was for some other purpose of like connecting to another platte or something like that.
It could... No. Technically, no, because this parcel directly to the east of this existing parcel is... Will be non-buildable, as the realignment of Biscayne will cut into that parcel somewhat.
Gotcha. And then the other question was, where would signage be placed? Is that going to be facing more 42, or is that going to be...
The sign permit application will have to be separate, and the applicant will require city staff to make sure that they abide by every sign regulation within the city's code.
Okay.
Yep.
Madam Chair and Commissioner, two up. Great questions, and I think the applicant would also be able to address a few of these as well.
Julia, going back to the opacity with the landscaping, the... Is there a good... A good number of coniferous trees then that are used in that screening? Because the deciduous aren't going to provide the 90% opacity.
Yes, to my knowledge, those ones, if you're looking at their plant schedule, it does look like a majority of those will be screening in that aspect.
Okay. So that would be my only thing is, I know I looked at it, but I... It was kind of hard with all the different kinds of trees to make sure that we had a healthy number of coniferous there.
Yep, and they have it outlined in their landscaping plan, that that is... That that area will be screened, which...
Okay.
Comes with that, so...
The area that's facing 149th?
Yes, and as well as majority of 149th, but then also to the east as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. And I will ask the applicant if he would like to speak and share. I know you had some things that staff said you were prepared to speak at tonight. Did you want to start us off? Yep, you can start us off.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Michael Geisens from Sunny's Enterprises. We are based in Tamarack, Florida, and we are the leading provider of car wash equipment for express car washes. I have some of my team here with me tonight, Mr. Chris Fritter, who is an expert on water, Mr. Timothy Hughes, who is a expert on equipment, as well as Luke and Paul Anderson, the applicants in ownership for this project. And we did have a number of items that came out of the neighborhood meeting. As previously mentioned, there were some questions around the traffic, the noise, and as well as the water. Regarding the traffic, did want to address that typical capture rate for a quick service retail location would be about 2% to 5%. An express car wash is going to be about 1% to 3% capture rate. Convenience in gas is going to be about 2% to 4%. So that in mind, we're going to be under some of those more, you know, common uses that you would see in a development parcel.
Can you explain capture rate a little bit?
I'm sorry.
Explain capture rate, and that's right?
Yes, so capture rate, so I'm looking at a figure here of 17,649 cars per day passing by 149th. The capture rate would be, we're estimating that we would attract or draw in 1% to 3% of that traffic. So that would come out to about 177 to 530 cars per day on the high side.
And your comparisons were that if a different commercial entity went in here, they have...
They would have an increase.
Some of those have higher capture rates than the car wash.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. And regarding the noise levels and the decibels, I'm sorry, I don't have this figure. Is there any way I can... Is there any way I can pipe in maybe an example, or maybe we could share it afterwards? But I do have a diagram that would be showing the noise levels on the vacuum producer. It is reading at about seventy-nine decibels at fifty feet without enclosures. And with the way that we designed the site, the idea is to keep that noise as minimal and as contained as possible to the site. So that seventy-nine decibels is going to be comparable to, you know, a loud car radio at about fifty feet, and we're looking at about two hundred and forty feet to the nearest residential property. The other point...
Is the seventy-nine, you said seventy-nine decibels was without enclosure?
Without an enclosure, yes, ma'am.
But these, you have enclosures around them?
Yes, ma'am.
So then does that drop the sound?
Yes, it does. Um, it does drop that, but the figure that I have the study performed on is without the enclosure, and that's at seventy-nine decibels.
Okay.
So it would be, we would expect that it would be less than that with the enclosure.
Enclosure and there's the landscaping in addition to that.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And you said the nearest residence was how many feet away?
Let me double check. I believe it was two hundred and forty feet.
Okay.
Yes, two hundred and forty feet from that nearest vacuum producer.
Okay. Do you, is there any way, like, so as you travel further out, I would assume it drops?
Correct, yes.
Is there a metric on how much it drops?
Um, I, I only have that fifty feet...
At fifty feet, okay.
...measurement, and that was a case study that was done by our company, uh, I believe, within the last couple of years.
Okay.
And regarding the water, apologize, I'm just hopping down to that point. So an express car wash with a reclaim system like we are using on this project is expected to have about five thousand to fifteen thousand gallons of affluent discharge per day. To compare to some other uses, a full-service car wash is about twenty thousand to thirty-five thousand gallons per day. A fast food restaurant is between five and ten thousand. Full-service restaurant, between ten and twenty-five thousand. And a hotel, twenty to thirty thousand. Um, you know, the point being that with the reclaim system and some of the advanced engineering that goes into the design of this system, we are minimizing our affluent discharge and making sure that all of that is as, as clean as possible. Um, I'm not an expert on the water. If there are any specific questions there, Mr. Chris Fritter would be the guy for that.
I, I was curious about the treatments, because it, one of the, one of the requirements is that there's treatment of water. Um, so it, will the water be treated before it's discharged?
Can I approach and speak?
Yes.
Perfect.
If you can just state your name and address.
Uh, my name is Chris Fritter. Um, not to ruffle your guys' feathers, but I'm from Inver Grove Heights, so just down the road, one oh six five two Elton Court. Um, so to answer your question about reclaimed water, right, all the water that comes back in a car wash tunnel, we want to recycle that and reuse it. We don't want them using excess water, and we don't want to deplete your water sources, right? So we treat it with hydrocyclones, which, um, I'm trying to think of an easy way. Think of a tornado, right? Um, all the heavy particles would go to the bottom, the usable goes to the top. So we settle out like a septic system, and then we also treat it with ozone. So like poultry, as it goes through, like, Hormel gets treated with ozone. We treat ours with ozone as well, that's next to the sewer line. So that bacteria is killed before it's processed and gone on. So we use two different ways that we treat the water before it's sent to sewer and sand oil separator.
Thank you.
Is that the question you're looking for?
Yeah, very well explained.
Perfect.
And what, so just to continue on that, I know you guys did some research on what the requirements are for inspections and such. Do you have anything you can share on that?
Of what you guys have locally?
Of, well, or what the state requires, what, like, will the tanks be inspected, um, annually?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is it just one inspection when you go in?
No, that's a great question. So they're prefabbed concrete tanks that go underground, right? And all those are pressure-treated concrete when they're sold to us, and when they're sold to us, they have to meet a certain specification before they can even enter the ground, and that's done through the general contractor.
Okay.
Um, and I don't believe it's yearly, um, but I know there is a sequence of which they'll be inspecting that's more due to your local and state laws than it is nationally.
Okay.
But we do have a mandate and a specification of how we have to purchase the tanks and meet that standard for pressure rating on concrete.
Okay.
So, did that answer your question?
Yep.
And then they'll be buried at the appropriate depth to where there's a frost line, access cover, and things of that nature, so...
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any other questions on water at this time? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time?
There's just the question on that, uh, kind of the drive and that corner, and what that was about.
Oh, the, yes, are you referring to this section?
Yep, right there.
I believe that that is for snow storage. It is not intended to be in access to another parcel.
Gotcha.
I see some shaking of heads back there. Sounds like you're...
In emergency vehicles, need to deal with access and turnaround, so the biggest firetruck Rosamont has can navigate this part.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
And then signage, is that going to be facing more towards forty-two, or is that...
So we're still working through, um, with the sign company to confirm all of the requirements, but we'll be in accordance with any local requirements.
Okay.
Wait, wait, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm forty-two.
Okay.
Can you talk about the capture rate with the different, uh, maybe per day? What does that equate to from a stacking perspective? Is there, I mean, is there anticipated stacking that you have? I know you have three lanes, which really helps, but trying to envision some of those really busy days, and what are the odds that that's going to spill out into one hundred and forty-ninth Street? I don't see that as likely, since you have three separate lanes, but I'm curious what that, what the anticipated level of vehicle usage is going to be, or what, what that can handle, because I'm having a hard time visualizing how many cars could theoretically, uh, fit into all three of those lanes.
Thank you for the question. Good question. So we can, uh, we have another model that we could submit with full stacking done with the traffic level and cap, expected capture rate at this site. We do not see, uh, the potential of this spilling out onto one forty-ninth as a problem.
How many cars can stack? Do you know how many, I mean, we don't need the model, but do you know how many cars can stack there?
It's over twenty vehicles. I can tell you that.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I can get a more firm number when I can take a look at the model.
Okay.
That's helpful, thank you.
Of course.
Thank you. Any other questions for, for the applicant at this time? Thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
At this time, we will invite anyone else that would like to speak on this item. To do so...
Hi, my name is Maggie Graney. My address is two five four two one hundred and forty-eighth Street West. Basically, directly across the street from, um, the, the car wash will be in my backyard. So I have a few questions. At the, um, community meeting we had, there was talk about, as far as the landscaping, that there would be a berm that all those shrubs and trees are planted on, about four feet elevation, to help block more of the light and noise going into the houses right there. I didn't know if that was still a thing. Um, also, you were talking about, uh, the opacity of the trees. It looks like the side of the lot that, um, will run parallel to Biscayne has quite a bit of density on the trees there, but there's no houses right next to that. My house is on, will back up to one hundred and forty-ninth Street. I wanted to know what the opacity of, um, the shrubbery is there as far as blocking lights and everything coming into my living room. And one other question was, uh, the vacuum pumps, when will those be shut off each day? Like, how late should I expect the noise? Um, those are the three questions I had.
Thank you, Maggie. We will take all the feedback and questions, and then we'll answer them, we'll ask the applicant to answer them at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello, Andy Dozdal, uh, fourteen eight oh three Blanca Avenue. So, um, also in the addition, directly behind. Um, just mainly wanted to voice also my concerns with, um, noise. I did have three next-door neighbors that could not make it here due to kid obligations and being out of town. They are speaking on their behalf as well. A lot of my questions, um, have already been asked, but, um, I guess not just understanding the noise. Uh, my first question is, um, the noise will be coming, it looks like, um, the two vacuum places are, one's north and one's south in the enclosures, but there are sixteen stalls for vacuums. I just want to make sure that it's those two places where the noise comes from and not sixteen vacuums, because even at seventy-nine decibels, times two is louder than seventy-nine decibels, right? Uh, but if you multiply that by sixteen, yikes. Um, and then also, um, I had a similar question, uh, as the previous citizen, um, in terms of, um, I heard that the trees were about six feet. I'm six-two, so that's not really enough to block sound. Um, I was also wondering if there's a berm and then trees on top of that, or if there's a sound wall or something else to, um, dissipate the, the sound that will be there. I do know that my next-door neighbor, Matt Sam, um, is the director of Public Works from Apple Valley. Uh, he is out of town, or he would be here, but he just said that, um, with the Mr. Car Wash off of Pilot and English Avenue, they do get weekly noise, um, complaints with that one, and just thinking about pets and stuff that are out. So noise is really my primary, and just wanted to understand more about that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak on this item this evening? Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
This is been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will ask the applicant to come back up if you can speak a little bit, um, to the, to the questions around noise, um, from, if it comes from the vacuums or the enclosures, um, also the landscaping on the opacity, um, the vacuum shut-off time. I won't pepper you with all of them all, oh, we can go one by one. So if you want to start with maybe the noise on the vacuums, the north and south enclosures, and where the noise comes from?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the noise will be coming from the two vacuum enclosures only, not the sixteen vacuum spaces. The enclosures here and here where the producers are located, those would be the sources of the noise. Um, we also build variable frequency drives into these, so the noise is going to be reduced when there's not a heavy load on them, below the, uh, formerly stated number of seventy-nine decibels.
Is there an option on that north enclosure to move it to the south?
I would have to check with our engineers.
Okay.
Um, I can, I can look into that.
It would move it further from the residence, and it would, um, like, I, I know you guys are over on parking spots, so even if you had to take out that last parking spot and put the enclosure there, would be an idea, unless you get, like, from a city requirement, the parking spots, there's plenty of parking, so...
Okay. I can, I can check with our engineers and, and see if a rework is possible.
Okay. And I, and I apologize too, because I had that question when I looked at the plans this weekend, and I meant to email it in, and I did not, so...
Perfect.
My apologies for not sending that in earlier. Um, the vacuum shut-off time, let's stick with the vacuums.
Uh, eight P M.
Okay.
Uh, they're only going to be on during hours of operation.
Okay, so they'll be on during hours of operation from eight A M. to eight P M.?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I did, in, in full disclosure, I also attended the neighborhood meeting, so I don't know if the eight A M., I don't remember where I, I knew that from the neighborhood meeting, I'm not sure if it was in the report. Um, okay, so, let's talk about the landscaping next, and the opacity on, more on Biscayne, like, the, is it denser, is there, are the trees denser and more opaque on the Biscayne side than the one forty-ninth?
So these are going to be more dense, more opaque trees going along one forty-ninth Street. And to address the question regarding height, I see a minimum height varying from six feet to ten feet for the trees that we have along one forty-ninth Street.
Okay, and so, so even though in the plan, it might look denser along the north or the east side of the lot, it's actually, you're going to see more density on that north side?
Yes, the goal was to maximize the density along that one forty-ninth Street to conceal, um, you know, that stacking lane, as well as minimize any light and noise spillage coming from the site.
Okay, and, and are a lot of those the coniferous trees, so that during the, the winter, there's still, still that shielding and screening?
Yes, the, I have, um, I have the scientific names of these trees, and I apologize, I don't, I don't know, um, but yes, most of them are, um, denser opaque trees to, to shield the site.
Okay. Okay. Um, let me see, what else? I know at the neighborhood meeting, we, we did kind of talk about a berm, and I know, um, where any time fitness is, the elevation is a little bit higher, kind of by the curb. I don't know if there's any, um, if the elevation of this lot is, if that end of the lot is up higher at all or not, or if you know that?
The topographic, I, our engineers are looking at that right now. Um, that was a feedback point from the neighborhood meeting, and we are investigating the topo to see if there's a possibility of building up that berm.
Okay. Um, let's see, we talked about the noise, the vacuum shut-off. Um, I think that's all the questions that I captured from the residence or the applicant. Does anyone have anything else for the applicant?
So do I understand it correctly, with the variable frequency drives, the maximum uh, decibels would be when all vacuums are in use, and they would be, you know, if there's one, it's going to be lower, so really the seventy-nine decibels, is that what it was?
Yes, that would be the max.
Yeah, that would be if all were in use, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
And it's, so it's less if only like three of them are in use?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay.
So as, as there's more load, that variable frequency is going to spin up, it's going to pull more power to bring more suction to the vacuums. As less, you know, people are using those vacs, it's going to spin down, less noise, less power.
Okay. Um, Julia, can you answer, or speak a little bit to the, the noise from Mr. Car Wash, Apple, the, anything there?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we did receive feedback from Apple Valley's Community Development Director, and from what I can remember from that email, there were some issues with noise, but not a large amount that it remained concerning.
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, the, so they said that the, they had, complaints are not zero, they have, but they would say that there were not many.
Yeah.
And mostly, um, experienced by people dining outdoors on the patios at the restaurants over there.
Okay.
Do we, do you happen to know if, I, I, I'm just going from memory, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot of, um, buffering between the, the car wash and some of the other areas there. Is there any, do we know if there's any kind of comparison on buffering here?
On the Mr. Car Wash?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, the area, the area immediately west of there is undeveloped for the most part of this time. Uh, so it's kind of an apples and oranges comparison between the two uses. Um, but, um, like I said, it, it was mostly from people dining at the restaurants, and it's, from an environment standpoint, there's parking lots and buildings and a lot of acoustic things to increase the amplification of that noise in that area within the shopping center.
That's kind of, I was thinking, I don't think there's much, like, landscape buffering or things around it at all, too.
Right.
Okay. Madam Chair, Commissioner Reed, too, the other thing to keep in mind as you're, you're thinking through the, the sound and the, the noise and the sound attenuation and some of the, the options that the developer presented as a part of that to help to mitigate that, regardless of either actual decibels or mitigation or other things in place, they're still obligated to meet any standards under MPCA for, for noise pollution that would be in place. So it's...
Do we know what those standards are?
I don't have those off the top of my head, but, um, if the developer has any idea on that or something else to consider, but they would also be, they, well, not also, they are held to, any, any business or any residence or any operation in Minnesota are held to those, those noise levels.
I, I don't know if the applicant knows if, I don't expect you to necessarily know that the Mr. Car Wash in town, but if they have similar vacuum enclosures, and if they have similar noise deafening systems.
I'm Paul Anderson, eighteen fifty-eight Sargent Avenue, St. Paul, Minnesota. Um, I can speak to that one. First off, on our enclosures around our vacuum pumps, the walls around those enclosures are eight feet tall, so the vacuum pumps will be hidden, so all the noise, for the most part, will be directed straight up and not out. Um, and Mr. Car Wash uses a very different vacuum system than we're using. Ours, like it says, has a variable range to it, whereas Mr. Car Wash's vacuums have less muffling systems, and they, they just run at their peak, um, which is part of the reason we partnered with Sunny's, knowing we're going to be in more of a residential-y area versus the Mr. Car Wash, which, like I said, is surrounded by parking lots and other, uh, stone buildings to help amplify and direct that. So, we were hoping to mitigate that as much as possible with landscaping, and of course, creating barriers and enclosures around the vacuum pumps, which you can see have doors that open and close, and will be closed during the day in operations, except for maintenance. So, I hope that helps clarify and answer more of those questions.
Well, what's kind of the, and I know this is not going to be exact, but do you have an idea of what that decibel difference is between the, kind of the muffled ones that you're proposing using versus the unmuffled ones, just so we had an idea?
So we, we can only speak to the testing we've done on the ones we're getting, which would be the maximum of seventy-eight decibels. You can't multiply sound and make more sound for the most part, so seventy-eight decibels is seventy-eight decibels, whether it's one or both. It doesn't all of a sudden become a hundred and sixty-eight decibels. So, but by us doing the variable rate ones, and having these enclosures, and trees that are at least six feet, um, I can speak to our sound levels will not go above that seventy-eight, even with all vacuums going. Which for the most part, won't be happening, so. But that's what I can speak to that we have now, and we can provide more studies specifically as to what you request moving forward, too, once permitting and stuff, we can do a little deeper dive into landscaping on whether or not we're allowed to do berms. That has to do with the stormwater runoff as well, is we can only do so much to the property before it starts changing where water goes. Um, and I know there's a specific pond for this whole lot where it's supposed to go. So, um, I know that we're looking into that, at what we can do, but we have to work back with, uh, the city planners and, and go with that, too, so.
Yeah, I think that sounds good, and I, my thought was, I know that the Anytime sits up a little higher, and I didn't know if that would just naturally be similar on that lot or not. Obviously, all lots are different.
Yeah, and I don't know, I know Anytime's right up on the storm pond, so I don't know if that has anything to do.
Right.
I'm not a landscaper by trade, so I can't speak to that, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions from the commission? Oh.
I also just want to add that any outstanding concerns that, you know, residents or, or the board might have, we're more than happy to work with, uh, you know, all parties in order to be a good neighbor. We want to be a productive and, and efficient wash there and, and add to the community, so happy to, uh, work through anything outstanding.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I, there was something, and I'm not sure if you can answer it, or if, um, if it's a Chris thing, there was a comment somewhere, and I, I apologize, I can't remember where I read this or where I saw this, about, um, water pressure changing. And if there's any, if, if there will be any change to residence water pressure with, with the water that you're pulling.
Sure, so very similar to the vacuums, we use a variable frequency drive with water, right? So water's going to be based off the demand, and I apologize, I'm not ignoring you, I have notes that, uh.
I.
I took here. Give me a second. So, there we go. Total gallons of fresh water per car is forty-three point six gallons of fresh water per car, right? And the max amount of cars you can wash in a minute is two. So the max amount of gallons per minute that you could get to would be eighty-six gallons per minute, right? So that would be the max that you could get. Through a two-inch water main that your, you know, City of Rosemont would be providing to the car wash, the max flow that can actually go through when it's a hundred and seven to a hundred and seventeen gallons per minute at fifty-five P S I. Our pump just takes and regulates that to fifty-five P S I. They have bladder storage tanks on it, and the main thing is to allow no pressure drop in the wash, right? As we run it through a water softener, as we run it through the treatment facilities that you asked, we want to make sure that we don't have pressure drop, and that's what we're actually looking for. So we maintain a constant pressure of fifty-five P S I. Um, the question I observed in the email that you guys sent was, what is the suction rate? There is no suction value based on head pressure of a pump, there's only pressure ratings versus long-time frequency, so the max that you guys could ever pull would be a hundred and seven gallons per minute. Um, and once again, when the wash isn't operational, you won't have any pressure loss, you would only have it from eight A M. to eight P M., and that'd be minimized through the two-inch main line coming in as well.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
I followed most of it, I think, but at the end of the day, residents don't see any water pressure change.
That is correct. Um, the only way you would see, the residents would be nervous, is if you increased the plumbing size coming into that wash to a six- or eight-inch main, that's the only way you can start to take away from that main sewer line.
Okay.
So.
Okay. That makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Any other questions related to that?
I don't think so.
Okay.
But I'm going to look back through my notes and see if I had anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think my questions are good. Anyone else have any questions, outstanding questions?
Nope.
No. Okay. And so with that, we can move forward with the motion.
All right, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve a site plan review allowing for the construction of a car wash facility at two five five zero, one hundred and forty-ninth Street West, subject to conditions one through five discussed.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Uga, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Um, two quick things, because it, it didn't fit in as necessarily a condition, but I would appreciate it if the applicant could look at potentially moving that, the vacuum further to the, to the south, further from the residence, if that's an option. Um, and I appreciate the review with staff of making sure that the, that we have a lot of coniferous trees along that, um, north side. Okay. So, um, again, those weren't necessarily conditions warranted, but I think that this, that those would be helpful for the neighbors, and I appreciate the neighbors coming tonight. I appreciate meeting you at the neighborhood meeting, um, and I, I think this will be a, hopefully, will be a great addition to the neighborhood, to our neighborhood. This item, I did, I did speak a little bit incorrectly at the neighborhood meeting, so I do want to clear that up here, that this item, because it was a site plan review, does not go forward to city council, so this is its last stop on approvals. Um, it will not move forward to city council, our decision tonight here is final unless it is, um.
Appealed by the.
Appealed, like, I can't think of the word, unless it is appealed, which has to be done within ten days to city, to city staff. So, um, this will not move forward to city council, it is, um, done here tonight unless there is an appeal, and at which case, then it would go forward to city council. And so with that, that concludes our public hearing section this evening. Is there any new business?
There's no new business, Madam Chair.
Okay. Um, our discussion items before we go through our meeting schedule for the next three months, Commissioner Reed, we talked a little bit before you arrived tonight, um, we have a few people out for the June twenty-fourth meeting. Are you around for June twenty-fourth meeting?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so, right now, we have you and Commissioner Beedner on June twenty-fourth. Liz is going to check with the other applicants, um, or the other commissioners to see if they are able to do that, otherwise, we may need to look at rescheduling that meeting. I am out.
Okay.
So, um, so you will own that meeting. And then, um, the next two meetings are July twenty-second and August twenty-sixth. I will remind the commissioners, if you can't make any of those upcoming meetings as well, please reach out to staff, um, to Liz and let her know. Anyone else have any other discussion items? Okay, with that, I will adjourn the meeting, meeting adjourned.